All to order the October twentieth city council meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith. Sid Porter.
Here.
Melissa Hunt. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Rob Clark. Mark Ham.
Here. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and it's going to be led by troop seven ninety-eight?
Color guard, attention. Color guard, advance. Color guard, post your colors. Color guard, honor your colors. Audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard dismissed. Audience, you may be seated.
Thank you very much. Item C is a proclamation declaring October twenty-third through the thirty-first, twenty twenty-five as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Moore. It's that time of year and there'll be different things happening in the Moore Public Schools, just promoting drug education and living a drug-free life. This year's theme for the Red Ribbon theme is life is a puzzle, so do it drug-free. We have the Red Ribbon Parade in Moore that first started here in nineteen eighty-eight and it's gone on every Saturday with the exception of a couple of COVID years. So I would like to read this proclamation. It says, whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in the nation has reached epidemic stages and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand of drugs and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October twenty-third through thirty-first, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And whereas the city of Moore further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore I, Mark Ham, mayor of the city of Moore, do by proclaim October twenty-third through thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, as Red Ribbon Week. And I encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities and I hereby direct that the Southwest Thirty-Fourth Street Bridge be lit with red lights in recognition of Red Ribbon Week to serve as a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. Sign and approve this twentieth day of October. So encourage all, there will be a lot of things happening Saturday. The Red Ribbon Parade starts at one o'clock and then later that evening, it's haunt Old Town, so it's just going to be a busy place and we'd love to have everybody out. So thank you very much. Item two is going to be our consent docket.
Make a motion, we approve the consent docket items A through C.
Second.
We've had the motion and a second, would you call the roll, please?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, consent docket passes. Item three is consider approval of a new job description for Parks and Cemetery Inspector in the Parks and Cemetery Division of the Parks Department and assign it to the pay grade one oh nine of the salary table approved by the city council on June twentieth, twenty sixteen in accordance with the budget approved by the city council for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Mayor and council, the Parks and Recreation Department requests approval of the submitted draft of a new job description for the Parks and Cemetery Inspector in the Parks and Cemetery Division. The new job descriptor will more accurately reflect the organization of the division and the duties to be performed. As Sue Wood, department director, described in her presentation at the most recent council meeting, this position will play a vital role in maintaining the overall appearance, safety, and functionality of city-owned outdoor spaces while supporting maintenance crews protecting citizens' investment in our parks. Additionally, this new position will replace the horticulturist position approved in July, twenty twenty-four, which will then become inactive in both human resources and finances systems. This position should be assigned to grade one oh nine of the pay scale for the most accurate placement based on the duties, responsibilities, and accountabilities assigned. Staff recommends approval and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have if I can.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item four is consider adopting resolution number one seventeen twenty-five, programming the reconstruction and widening of Southwest Nineteenth Street and South Broadway slash Tower Drive intersection as a surface transportation block grant urbanized area project.
Mayor and council, items four through seven are resolutions requesting ACOG funding. For this item, this project consists of the realignment of the Nineteenth Street and Broadway Tower Drive intersection. Broadway will be aligned, realigned to make a right angle and line up with Tower Drive. The project also consists of the closure of Linda Lane to help with the flow of traffic as streetscape, a multi-use trail, and stormwater quality improvements. The total estimated cost is five million eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars, and the city would have to contribute to twenty percent, which would be one million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars.
And this is part of a GO bond, but is this also just some grant money that we got? Or is this separate?
This is for the application.
The application?
Yes.
Yeah, no guarantee that we're going to get it.
Correct.
Well, good, I'm glad we're going after it.
Yeah, thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item five is consider adopting resolution number one eighteen twenty-five, programming LED arterial signage upgrades along Nineteenth Street Corridor from Santa Fe Avenue to Eastern Avenue as surface transportation block grant urbanized area safety project.
Mayor and council, this project consists of replacing arterial road signage with upgraded LED street signs at seven intersections along the Nineteenth Street Corridor from South Santa Fe to Broadway Avenue. The estimated cost is four hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine. Since this is classified as a safety project by ACOG, there's no match, so we're asking for that full amount.
So in here, it talks about going all the way to Eastern. Are we stopping at Broadway or going to Eastern?
Um, I believe Broadway.
Eastern?
Eastern.
Okay, very good.
Sorry.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
We've had the motion and the second, would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item six is consider adopting resolution number one nineteen twenty-five, programming the application of the multi-polymers traffic striping in various locations as a surface transportation block grant urbanization area safety project.
Mayor and council, this project consists of applying pavement markings and multi-polymer roadway striping to various streets throughout the city identified by the Public Works Department. The estimated cost is nine hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And again, since this is a safety project, there will be no cost or match required.
No, didn't we get this last year or we did a bunch of?
I believe we've gotten them, gotten this before, but this is different areas identified.
Well, it was, we did a lot with, it wasn't, the amount wasn't this much, but we were able to cover a lot of the city with it. So this is a great thing. It's amazing how much paint costs. So I hope we can get this.
We received two paint projects and then two signal projects.
Okay.
Very good.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item seven, seven is consider adopting resolution number one twenty twenty-five, programming traffic signal detection and emergency preemption upgrades along Telephone Road Corridor from Northwest Fifth Street to Southwest Thirty-Fourth as a surface transportation block grant urbanized area safety project.
Mayor and council, this project consists of upgrading the signal lights for the Telephone Road Corridor from Southwest Thirty-Fourth to Northwest Fifth Street, including the two service road intersections at Northwest Fifth Street. The vehicle detection systems will be replaced with the radar detection system to assist with the stacking of vehicles and emergency vehicle preemption. The estimated cost is one million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And since this is a safety project, there will be no match for the city.
Very nice. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
With the motion and a second, would you call the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item eight is consider approval of revisions made to the City of Moore Home Repair Program Manual.
Mayor and council, the home repair manual is first approved by, by council on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. The following additional eligibility requirements are being requested. The property must be the primary residence of the applicant. Note, second homes are eligible and all mortgage and tax payments must be current. Staff is also requesting to increase the maximum grant award from five thousand to eight thousand. During the first year of the program, it's found that the average cost per home is around eight thousand.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Thank you. Item nine is consider approving an agreement with Team Design P O L C in the amount of eighty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for professional engineering services for improvements to the Riverwalk Drive and Southwest Nineteenth Street intersection.
Mayor and council, recall back in February at the retreat, we discussed the traffic study performed by Traffic Engineering Consultants of the Nineteenth Street Corridor between Fritz Boulevard and Tower Road. Currently, there are seven traffic signals in that three-quarters of a mile and it's just a, lack of better terms, a traffic nightmare. But what, what the recommendation was from the study was that we eliminate the traffic signal at Riverwalk and Nineteenth and remove the traffic signals, install curbing and paving markers or pavement markers that allow just one way in and one way out of Walmart on the north side and then not to Riverwalk on the south side. This particular agreement allows for the design of those improvements and we would recommend that we approve the design.
So the key question I didn't ask you a while ago, we got Walmart's buy-in on this?
Yes, we had a, we had a meeting, it was a virtual meeting with a couple of representatives from their corporate office and they agreed that it was probably a good idea.
Okay, good, excellent. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had the motion and a second and I would just agree and I know that Nineteenth Street is just ongoing discussion, but the city is always looking for opportunities to make improvements on that corridor to help with traffic flow and so we believe this will be significant, at least for that section. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item ten is consider authorizing the purchase of one twenty-twenty-six club car carry-all five-hundred gas utility vehicle and one twenty-twenty-six club car temp four-passenger gas vehicle from Clear Creek Golf Car and Utility Vehicles in the budgeted amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars as the lowest responsible quote.
Mayor and council, the small utility vehicles we've requested will be replacing the ones presently owned, which now need constant repair. We need these vehicles to perform park tasks at large regional parks and for special events. Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item eleven, consider authorizing staff to solicit bids for restroom facilities at Buck Thomas Park located at nineteen oh one, Northeast Twelfth Street.
Mayor and council, the Parks and Recreation Department has completed the information needed to solicit bids for the baseball complex restrooms at Buck Thomas Park. They will be a definite improvement to what is there and we recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item twelve is consider awarding bid number twenty-twenty-six dash zero zero two for the budgeted purchase of eight fleet vehicles to confidence Ford in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars as the lowest bidder.
Mayor and council, this is our budgeted annual just fleet maintenance update. Eight vehicles have been identified to be replaced this year. These are the eight vehicles that will be gone through the bid process and confidence Ford was the lowest bidder. Four of these will be marked and four of these will be unmarked. It's also important to note two things. The capital calendar says that we will purchase these vehicles on, in December. We still intend to follow the capital calendar and make these purchases in December, which would be, we would encumber the money and not expend it until after twenty twenty-six. But the portal is still volatile and so we don't know when they're going to close the border. We know it'll be sometime in December and we just want to go ahead and get authorization from this body so that if we get a call that we need to quickly order these vehicles, we could do that because they've told us that it will be closing. They just can't tell us when it will be closing. Also, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are companion items. That's equipment that would be used to outfit those vehicles. We happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've had the motion and a second, you can call the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item thirteen is consider authorizing the budget purchase of four in-car video system and related equipment from Motorola Solutions doing business as watch guard in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, forty cents using the NASPO mobile video contract, OKMA one four five two one five hundred.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. And item fourteen is consider authorizing the budget purchase of safety equipment for the installation on eight fleet vehicles from Fleet Safety Equipment doing business as Dana Safety Supply in the amount of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, ten cents using state contract number S W zero one four two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item fifteen is consider authorizing the budget purchase of eight mobile radios from L Three Harris Technologies, Inc. in the amount of forty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars, ninety-six cent pursuant to Sourcewell Contract Number zero four two zero two one dash L Three H and sit number two nine five seven six six. City of Moore, Moore, Oklahoma, Sourcewell Membership ID number nine one five one five.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries and money well spent.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Item sixteen is consider authorizing the budget purchase of one twenty-foot and nine forty-foot one-trip cargo containers beige in color for fire department training from Storage Equipment Company in the amount of forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars as the lowest quote.
Mayor and council, we've identified a need for a safe and consistent training space that could mimic a single-family or multifamily dwelling for our young fire department to practice skills such as search and rescue, hose stretching, fire streams, ladder operations. We intend to accomplish that by closely grouping these containers where our firefighters will then cut passageways and doorways in the structure to mimic a dwelling. Recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just curious, where do you kind of put, putting these?
So at our old training center, Fire Station Two on Twelfth Street.
Okay, back behind you?
Yes, Cleveland County worked with us to lay an asphalt pad. We only had to pay for material. They provided all the labor to put that pad there. We'll put the Conex boxes on that.
How long do you think these will last?
Uh, I don't know. I think a lot of that is.
More than a one-time use?
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe that's the better question.
It's going to bridge us for a while.
Okay, alright.
I think how long the inside will last, the wood floor and the metal is going to be dependent upon how much water we flow and how well they'll drain.
Yeah, okay, very good. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Thank you, sir. Item seventeen is consider approval of ordinance number one zero six nine two five, amending Part Fifteen, Chapter Fourteen, Section Fifteen dash fourteen oh two of the Moore Municipal Code. By adding a requirement, the vehicles involved in a collision involving property damage only move their vehicles off the roadway, providing for repealer and providing for separability.
Mayor and council, this is a small change to our current ordinance requiring any driver of any vehicle that is involved in an accident where there's only property damage, no injury, but property damage to another that the vehicle that is driven require to remove their vehicle from the roadway, onto the shoulder, emergency lane, or a safe location that does not obstruct traffic. The way it is currently written there, it just says every stop shop made without obstructing traffic more than is necessary. I think that leaves a little bit of a gray area. This just makes it more precise. We know exactly what needs to be, needs to be done.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item eighteen is consider approval of ordinance number ten seventy twenty-five, amending Part Three, Chapter Three dash One, Section Three dash One oh six of the Moore Municipal Code by adding a provision prohibiting the transportation of an open container of marijuana or the consumption of marijuana or marijuana smoke while operating a moving vehicle, providing for repealer and providing for separability.
Mayor and council, this is basically a new paragraph to our current ordinance, transporting an open container. This coincides with the new state law that is going into effect. Basically, it is unlawful to consume marijuana or inhale second-hand smoke from the passenger or anyone else in the vehicle and you cannot have an open container of marijuana in the vehicle while I'm operating the vehicle. Like I said, it coincides with state law. It goes into effect November first.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Thanks for keeping our charter and municipal ordinances up to date and current. I know it can be kind of mundane, but we need to do it. Item nineteen is consider approving a transfer of one million from the general fund to the reserve fund.
Mayor and council, per ordinance, at the end of each year, as we close out the fiscal year, we come back and make a recommendation to the council as far as moving money into the reserve account. Working with the finance director, our recommendation for this year is to transfer one million dollars. Recommend approval.
What's the balance? For reserve?
Uh, we're close to seven million dollars.
What was your goal?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. Great. Excellent. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. At this time, we're going to recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item twenty is the consent docket.
Make a motion, we approve the consent docket, items A and B.
Second.
You can call the vote.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Consent docket passes. Item twenty-one is consider authorizing the budget purchase, purchase of a twenty-twenty-six Ford F six hundred chassis XL six eighty A regular cab, four-by-four, six-point-seven-liter V-eight diesel, two oh five, wheel-based DRW Oxford White from Bob Moore Ford in the amount of seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars using state contract number S W zero zero three five.
Council and mayor, the items twenty-one and twenty-two are co-items. Twenty-one will transport or the item twenty-two will be mounted on it. It's for our public utilities division for cleaning the sanitary, sanitary sewer system and staff recommends approval.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item twenty-two is consider authorizing a budget purchase of a USJ twenty forty dash seven fifty skid-mounted high-pressure jetting unit from J and R Equipment Environmental Truck Sales using state contract number S W one ninety-three to include installation on the aforementioned twenty-twenty-six Ford cab chassis in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Council and mayor, this is the item that actually does the work that's mounted on the cab chassis.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is this the big truck that helps with sewer backups and homes?
Yes, but it's much smaller than our big ones. This is a smaller unit so we can get into areas you can't with those big dual-axle units.
Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item twenty-three, yes, thank you. Consider adoption of resolution number two seven two twenty-five, agreeing to file application with the Oklahoma Water Resource Board for financial assistance through various loan programs with the loan proceeds being for the, for the purpose of financing certain wastewater system improvements, approving and authorizing professional service agreements, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Mayor and council, items twenty-three and twenty-four are companion items. These documents are similar to the ones that were approved when we did the new lift station out on Indian Hills Road. So these are just things that the OWRB requires us to do in order to potentially get loan proceeds. Our bond counsel and financial advisor are here to answer any questions. Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And just for clarity, this is for at least one project that we have discussed for some just critical infrastructure that we need to do over at the treatment plant.
Yes, at the wastewater treatment plant, yes.
Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-four is consider, consider adoption of resolution number two seventy-three twenty-five, declaring the intent of the Moore Public Works Authority to expend certain funds in connection with wastewater treatment plan improvements and set expenditures to be reimbursed from the proceeds of debt to be incurred by the authority and containing other provisions related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. We will recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item twenty-five is the consent docket.
Make a motion, we approve items A and B.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. We will recess the risk management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting. And is that person here? Our councilperson for that?
Who's the vice?
Yeah, who's the?
Who's the vice?
It is.
Yeah. They may be gone too.
Melissa Hunt. Kathy Griffith.
So I just read it?
Louis Williams.
Or do we just move on?
Okay, alright, okay.
Oh, okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith. Sid Porter.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Rob Clark. Melissa Hunt.
Okay, item twenty-seven is the consent docket.
Make a motion to approve item A.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Okay, item twenty-eight is new business. Is there, nobody signed up to speak? Is there anything from the city council trustees?
I just want to continue to thank staff for the great job you do and our department heads, especially coming here on these meetings. But all the updates and looking at legal stuff and looking to our future needs and budget needs, there's a lot of things that you have.
you have to look ahead of times because if you wait three months, it might double in the price or you may not get it for three years. And I'm just always amazed at the great job that everybody does and I just wanted to personally thank you on that.
Agreed. Anybody else? Anything from our city trust manager?
Just a couple of things. The renovation of City Hall continues, they're finishing up on the second floor, so they're pretty close on that. And then the community development area's been, the demolition is completed there, so they're beginning the, they'll begin the construction there, so those things are moving along. And then shout out to the police department and everybody else that was involved for the Burgers and Badges event last week. I believe twenty-five-hundred people showed up, so it was a very, very successful event.
Very good.
Nice.
Way to reach out. And I did just remember something. In February, we did our city retreat, we're looking at doing that again in February, so if y'all can just kinda start looking at your calendars, I think we did, we do it on our Friday, I don't remember, Deidre will probably send something out and just, or Brooks or whoever, about finding a date. But then y'all also, councilors, begin to think about what are some things we need to discuss as a council and so forth, so be thinking about that. Item twenty-nine is executive session. Section three-oh-seven, Title Twenty-five, Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, take possible action regarding pending court case number CJ twenty-twenty-three dash four-sixty-seven filed in Cleveland County Court by Abel Law Firm on behalf of James Thompson against the City of Moore and authorize staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three-oh-seven-B four.
Make a motion we convene to executive session?
Second.
Okay, we've had the motion for executive session, and a second, would you call the vote?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, and our normal meeting room is full, so we're gonna go upstairs, those who are involved in this. Item B is, or item C, we will reconvene from executive session, all that were present are still present, and item B is action. Make a motion, we have staff proceed as directed.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
German's the next, need a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
We're adjourned.
Alright, thanks y'all, appreciate it.
Everybody, and seeing you.